You are watching Access to Port County, Channel 97. Coming up next, the April 21st meeting of the Michigan City Commission for Women. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www accesseslaportcounty.org.
Shall I go ahead and begin?
Sure.
Open this up.
Okay.
Five thirty-four. We'll call our meeting to order. And... Albertine Allen here. Bonnie Shafe here. Fay Moore here. Joanne Scott here. Christina Isabelle is present. Nicole Holman is absent. Sarah Jones present. Charlizee absent. Veronica Martin is absent. And Angie, our city council liaison, is absent. Okay. We'll give Joanne a little bit of time before I mark her down. Okay. Now, we have the approval of our March minutes. Did anyone get a chance to read through those?
Yeah, just one correction in the minutes. It's Charles Westcott Park. It was Prescott in the minutes. So, I make a motion that we accept the minutes with that correction.
What was that again?
Westcott. It's Charles Westcott. W-E-S-C-O-T. It's on the second page, I believe, where the park was mentioned.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's Westcott. W-E-S-C-O-T. Is it one T or two?
Two Ts.
Yeah, two Ts.
My second.
So, I made a motion to accept the minutes. And Bonnie seconded the minutes. The motion.
All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Thank you. All right. So, now we are on the Treasury report. Very simply stated, we had our balance without... We had no deposits and no disbursements this month. So, our current balance is fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-five cents.
I make a motion to accept the Treasury report as presented.
Second.
And... Hi! Oh, good. Veronica Martin is here. Okay. And all in favor to approve the Treasury's report?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Okay. So, we have no guest speaker for this month, but we have plenty to talk about. And so, we're gonna... Oh, Joanne is here.
My apologies, everyone. This is nice.
So, we've had a chance to meet, well, actually, twice with this, celebrating the ten years of the Women's Commission and the Women's Equality Day. We did come up against a few roadblocks as we thought we would be holding this event at Lubesnick. But Lubesnick is not available on a Friday night for an event like this. So, we are kind of evolving this event a little bit because our expenses will go up on this to accommodate rental space and catering and all of that. So, let's do a little recap of where we are. Does that sound good?
Sure.
So, for this very special event, celebrating the Women's Equality Day and ten years of this commission, that is what we want to do. We're gonna celebrate that. We're gonna honor the commissioners and their community leadership. We are looking to have a keynote speaker as well as some of the past chairs to speak at this event. We will share our goals and our new programs, and this will also be our fundraising event. Right now, we are proposing the date of August 26th. We would like this to be a dinner event, just because it is such a special evening. We have a proposed fee at the moment of fifty dollars per person with the possibility of sponsoring a table at five hundred dollars, a ten-person table. Yes.
If you sponsor a table for five hundred dollars, do you get anything else?
Oh, I don't know what happens with what would be our...
Well, sometimes people, they usually sponsor... The table is five hundred, so they usually add fifty dollars or a hundred dollars for a ad.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I said, "You're gonna be our sponsor." Because just buying a table is not making...
Getting money.
I found that out the hard way.
Okay.
Just buying a table doesn't make you a sponsor.
Yes.
A table is five hundred. But to be a sponsor, you usually add something.
Okay.
Like do an ad book or add in the program.
It depends. It varies from one agency to another. It does.
Didn't understand a thing you said, Joanne. I really didn't understand a thing you just said.
I said, "It varies a great deal from one agency to another when they present these things, how they build it in."
Right.
So, we haven't really discussed that at all.
We haven't discussed that, but I think this is an okay forum to have a little bit of conversation and brainstorming on it since we are still developing this program.
No, I was just asking a question, Joanne. Because you can just sponsor a table for five hundred, but most people, if you're gonna sponsor a table, they want something else.
And sometimes the tables are more than the number seated.
Right.
So, you are paying upfront.
Right.
So, it varies. We didn't even talk about how large the tables would be. We don't even know if we're gonna get a ten-person table.
That's possible. It is possible. But I do like that vision because we do want to create a program, and so we will have additional costs with the program. So, that's... So, we'll take that in as well. Again, just mentioning that in this, the program, we probably have some music to open the music when people are coming in. Two to three past presidents speaking. We are proposing potentially the first chair, who was Sharon Karns, to be one of the speakers.
She agreed.
Oh, fantastic. So, we have one agreed. Fantastic. So, and we can determine who those other speakers will be. We have a suggestion for the keynote speaker. Dana Black, who is a woman who came and spoke at one of our equality elections a few years ago. She's a very powerful force in Indiana politics. She's been supporting a lot of women who to run for office, and she's just a great speaker. So, does anyone have any other suggestions or thoughts?
Let's think about it a little bit.
Yeah, totally. Think about it. The goal is by May, our May meeting, that we have our space confirmed, that we have the kind of the program confirmed by May. So...
We want it on a Friday night.
Well...
Or Friday evening.
We will... That is hot, hot. Hopefully, we would like it on that. That's the Women's Equality Day. It's a special day. Although, since we found out that we would not be able to use Lubesnick, I've done a little bit of research of event spaces, and Friday nights are way more expensive, and especially in August, which is wedding time.
Would you like me to check with the ORAC and see if he's got anything?
That would be fantastic.
His name is Mike.
Yes. Please.
Can I give you a bit of price?
Well, he may. Usually, if we had it on Monday through Thursday, there wouldn't be a cost. It would be the cost of the food.
Yeah.
But not the facility. But Friday and Saturday and Sunday, they charge the weekend. So, you know, we've been pretty fortunate so far, so I'll check and see.
That'd be great. Because what prices that I'm looking at right now, just to give you an idea, like Uptown Social, for instance, on Monday through Thursday, their rental fee is fifteen hundred, but they also have a staffing fee of fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred, and their bar fees are the minimum twenty-two dollars per person at a twenty-two-hundred-dollar minimum. So, there's just no way we can do that.
When I used ORAC, it was you choose the menu, and it goes from, I think, eighteen to thirty dollars to some menu. And then, the bar, I think it's seventy-five dollars extra for the bartenders. And then, you have to have a security guard. I always happened to be lucky enough to get Marty Corley, and so it didn't cost us anything, but it's a lot. I think the only thing you'd be paying for really is the rental, I think.
The last time I paid six hundred dollars?
Yeah.
On a Friday night?
Of course, I had it on a Saturday.
Oh.
So, it'd be going up too much for that. I mean, price has probably gone up.
Yeah. Because I'll give you another, for instance, a Barrel House at Zorn. This is just the space cost. Monday through Thursday, six hundred dollars, which is, you know, okay. But Friday night is three thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. So, we're a little bit of a rescue station. It's new here.
Oh, Mike.
I did find out there is this new venue called White Oak Farm. Has anyone been there yet?
White Oak Park.
White Oak Farm.
Oh, White Oak Farm.
And they literally just built two barns as event spaces, but they're very expensive. So, I won't even tell you that. It's new to the Michigan City area.
White Oak Park is now called, now the...
It's the Moose.
Moose. It's the Moose.
Oh, really? It was nice out there. You might come and see it, too.
Mm-hmm.
So, here's some other ones since we're on this subject, if you can think of any other places that we should check out. We have Barker Hall on our list to check out. Lubesnick is available but only for Tuesdays and Septembers' lunchtime, just to have that in your brain as an option.
So, I'm sorry, nothing in August at all for Lubesnick?
No. So, they're very busy. So... And then, also, we were considered the Tryon Farm Guesthouse, but it's an outdoor venue, which would then change the event a little bit, but...
Right, right.
Does anyone have any other recommendations of places that we should consider?
I wondered about Potawatomi Country Club.
I did, too. I left that out.
And Long Beach Country Club.
Okay. I looked up the Potawatomi Country Club, and I couldn't tell if you needed to be a member.
We never have.
No.
No, we never had that problem.
Okay.
And we've had a number of things.
Oh.
That league.
And then, Long Beach. Okay. And then, we're gonna look at ORAC. Any other suggestions, potential suggestions? Okay.
Did I say White Oak Park?
No.
They just remodeled out there, too.
You know, I just wanted to bring up something. I know you've often mentioned...
I'm sorry. We're just... It was again the...
ORAC.
ORAC. And we've never followed through for some reason. And I don't know why. Was there any hitch, any problem?
You said, "We mentioned ORAC before."
Oh, oh. She mentioned it several years. Yeah.
I never had a problem here.
No, I know you haven't, but I don't know why we haven't followed through. That's what I'm saying. Was there something?
I don't know.
Yeah. Maybe because Lubesnick came, kind of always came easily.
But it was always on a Tuesday.
Yeah. And it was, and we did luncheons.
Well, I made a make part of the... My menu had pork chops and something else on it, and so he said stuffed pork chops. And I said, "Okay, what are you gonna stuff them with?" He said cornbread, he said dressing, and I said, "What kind?" He said, "What other kind is there?" I said, "Have you used cornbread?" He said, "No." I said, "Well, let's get busy." We went in the kitchen and we made cornbread.
Well, I think you have a good connection with them. I think we should definitely look at that. We can make our own menu.
That would be great to be... We always had to carry stuff. Yeah. Great to be aware of some.
So, you're just going and sit down and enjoy.
Yes. So, fantastic. Again, our timeline for this is May to confirm our space, guest speakers and entertainment. And then, in June, we want to send out the Save the Date. July would be our invitation, which we can do an Eventbrite as well as a mail, but that people would be paying ahead of time through Eventbrite so that we know how many people to expect. Our SVP would be around August 15th and event on August 26th.
Do you have invitation, like something drawn up that you want to put on an invite?
Not yet. Not done.
Maybe you might ask one of the high school students from the art club, art class.
Well, that's a fun idea. I was gonna ask my husband to do it for us, but... So, maybe it's better to get someone else. Yeah, so what we have left, I mean, as we continue this, one of the fun projects that we'd like to do is have on every table a woman from Michigan City, historic woman or just someone from Michigan City, will be like kind of a...
Like a little...
Yeah, like a little display. And then, we'll have a little trivia question. And so, as a way to engage with everybody, we'll have one table get up, ask the trivia question to everybody else, and then we can, then they'll have to just say a few words about the figure that they're representing on the... So, we continue that idea of sharing the history of our community, of the women here and strong leadership that has been here, and just to kind of engage people that way. So...
Good.
So, we started a list of names.
Okay.
But you all might have others. Should I list some of them just so you hear them?
Yeah.
And then...
Something I was going to ask, and I think I alluded to it, but we didn't really discuss it. It appeared when we first started that those we were citing were all deceased.
Yes.
And in a way, I like that because it doesn't, that it doesn't impact anyone who's still living, that we didn't select them. And I think there are a lot of historical people that a lot of us don't know about. So, I'd kind of like to continue with that.
Well, no one knew about Naomi Anderson.
That's right.
Her own descendants.
That's right.
So, yes, we need to highlight.
And there are a lot of wonderful names from this area.
I will try to... I have down, and I might not have their names right because I don't know all these people. But we mentioned Naomi Anderson, of course. Colfax.
Who?
Harriet. Harriett, the lighthouse keeper.
Who's the last name?
The old lighthouse, the original lighthouse keeper.
Colfax. C-O-L-F-A-X.
Yes. And we have Zola Misner. She was the first woman state representative from Michigan City, elected in 1928.
I love that. How you spell that?
And she is buried here.
Z-E... Yeah. Z-E-O-L-A. Misner. M-I-S-N-E-R. Anita Bowser?
Yeah, definitely.
I don't remember her.
Go ahead and say who Anita Bowser is for those of...
Outstanding state senator.
Outstanding.
State senator. State senator, yes. And she was very, very popular.
She was always involved.
And a league member. I mean, she was just in so many.
She was a constitutional scholar.
She certainly was.
She worked in the state house. So, it's fantastic that you guys are, have an awareness of all these figures, because then we will need to make the little cards for the tables with these, all these facts.
So, you don't want, you don't want their picture on the table when we were five then, I take it? That you were saying that you want...
Well, if you don't put the name on there.
Well, on each table, like, so another table wouldn't know. We'll have a different person.
I see.
So, if there's a trivia question on the photo of that person, and then you can ask a question and then, you know, give us some facts or something.
Do you have anybody else?
Oh, yes, we have more. We have Sylvia...
Sophia Silviankoff.
Yeah. And of course, I think a lot of people here do know of her because you attend...
Sylvia.
Yeah, because you attend the Sinai Forum. She and her husband founded the forum. Milton was a doctor. She was... Oh, I've been reading a little bit more about her, and I didn't even know all about her. She was a close neighbor of mine, just a couple of blocks away. And outstanding, mainly through the Sinai Forum, but she got degrees in, like, when she was in her seventies from University of Chicago. I didn't know that. I did not know that. Yeah. So, she was later than I was with my degrees. I didn't feel good.
We have Diana of the Dunes.
How do you spell that last name?
Just, I don't know her last name, actually. Diana is the of the Dunes.
Oh, of the Dunes.
Yeah. She was the one who had a cabin in the Dunes and lived by herself for a long time. There's a lot of stories about her. She used to go swimming or bathing naked, and the fishermen would come up to watch her.
I guess.
She was independent.
And she was a photographer and author. I'm trying to remember. She was also professional.
No, she was definitely ahead of her time and a smart lady. Yes, I don't know exactly what she did. So, this is all research, fun research to do. Then, we have Sylvia...
Troon.
Troy.
Troy.
Sylvia Troy was very active in the beginning of the park, in Save the Dunes and other organizations that are still very, very important. Yeah, she was very prominent when I first moved here.
And then, I don't know this person's last name, but I have Jeanette.
Jeanette.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Jeanette Neuhu.
She just, she just recently passed.
Okay. Couple others. Was a singer, Meriwether.
Do you know who?
Oh, God.
Yeah. She passed away about twenty years ago, I think.
Annette.
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 She was an actress there. She moved to Paris.
How much she had saved?
Mm-hmm. No, her sister. No, her first cousin, neither.
And then, I have Becky Williams.
Yes.
You have no...
Founder of Hope, I think.
Many of us know her.
Yes. Is she alive?
No, no.
Okay. Lee Box.
Yes. A very well-known, very well-known biologist at NIST and wrote a great deal about this area. She was very active in that area.
B-O-T-T-S.
Now, the other question is, I don't believe she ever lived in Michigan City, per se. So, are we going to just look at women from Michigan City or...
I think all the others are from Michigan City. So, maybe we should do that.
Yeah, I'll find out where she was born and lived, but I...
Did she live here, though?
She lived in the area. I know they'll just pick her up on the way to meetings and so on, but, yeah, I equate her with maybe Porter County. I'm not sure.
Just put a question mark by that.
She kept it. And that's, wait, that's the list thus far, so any names?
How many do you want to do?
No, I don't know.
I have a number of other names.
I have Ms. Marion Whitlow.
Wait, wait.
She was...
Yeah, Marion Whitlow.
Marion Whitlow. Yeah. Marion Whitlow. She was a professor of nursing at PNC.
And outside, too. But did she do something in Indy, too? I think she...
She helped form the Minority Health Coalition. She was on that first board in 1992. And she was already a professor out at PNC.
Yeah, I think we definitely need to have her in there.
I'm trying to think of the lady that had the modeling class at Sears. As well as I know her name, I can't get it to...
I was trying to remember the dancer. There was a dancer...
Oh, Ms. Ballet Lady.
Yes.
Joseph.
Yes.
Judy Joseph.
Judy Joseph.
She used to do ballet with the Headshot Kids.
But she's still living, isn't she?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
We always called her the Ballet Lady.
And I think still dancing. Yeah. Well, it'd be nice to get her to come.
Then, we had this lady who was...
You know, I mean...
Oh, absolutely.
Modeling class at Sears.
Oh, I know. Kathcart.
Kathcart.
Mancart.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, is that someone we're adding?
She had modeling class. She was an actress, but she lived out on the beach.
C-A-T-H.
She had a modeling class at Sears.
Is that someone we're adding? I don't know.
She was, yeah, she was in movies. And she had a twin sister. She was in, like, Mickey Rooney movies.
Oh.
And she was...
Michigan City. I don't know the name.
And the two sisters married people, men that were in the Lawrence Welk Orchestra.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And then, they moved here.
She was very prominent around here. She did a lot of...
Yeah, she was beautiful.
Stuff at the library with the youth. She had the modeling class going out at Sears. And something else she did, and I can't remember, but I just couldn't get that name right. She was very active. Very educated, right?
No, this is a mixtape. We can spell her.
This is low and boring.
Would you spell her names, both of them, so I have them correct?
Man is L-Y-N-N. Kathcart. I spelled it C-A-T-H. Wait a minute, I can't read them.
C-A-R-T.
C-A-R-T.
Okay, great.
So, this list can continue to grow.
Yes.
You know, and I actually think that would be great. I did a little bit of research looking at the Indiana State Women's Commission's site and got a lot of ideas for us, but one thing that they did do, although they haven't been active really since 2018, like, nothing, there's nothing after 2018. But in Women's History Month, they used to have a different female, like, women highlighted. And so, there is a fantastic list of Indiana Hoosier women.
I got a whole list. I've been doing it every Sunday since Black History Month. We put a different female on the Bulle's reported church. And then, after we did those most famous people around the world, we started with the people in the church.
I love that.
And so, the young women that went off and became professionals in their trade, we've honored them, too. So, I got a list of them, as a whole.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, definitely.
The lady that drew the face on the dime or the penny, she's African-American. I got a bunch of stuff I'm sure with you.
I was just going to say that, two things I wanted to ask, really. But about the list, this was a list that we would come up with. I know I worked with Sharon on it at least one year, but the league was often involved in creating a list to be read off at the city council meeting. And so some of these women were mentioned. I know, I think I had Sylvia Troy mentioned. But again, what occurred to me is that some of the people, and especially the environmentalists that I'm aware of, may not have ever lived in Michigan City, but they certainly were very active in organizations in Michigan City. So, you know, that's one way to look at it, too. And Charlotte Reed was, who died just about a year ago. She and her husband were incredible activists. And she was, I believe, the first woman in, how is it, Save the Dunes? I'm not sure which one, but I think Save the Dunes. But she's just a phenomenal name in environmental here, environmentalist here. And so I do have her name down, but I don't know if she ever lived in Michigan City. I know the place where they lived and I think it's, it's important to tell me, I think. I guess I did the park, but it's not Michigan City.
Yeah. I do remember when we had the Shirley Hines, no, we had Save the Dunes. We had to speak at one of our events. She had a great history. She's had a lot of names, so maybe she might be a good reach out to and to kind of clarify. Because she might know.
I'm sorry, was only, what were you referring to?
The director of Save the Dunes. When she came and spoke, she listed off a lot of names at that time, too.
Charlotte was definitely.
Yeah, so Charlotte's probably on that time, too.
I want to add Rhonda Lee to that list. She was an environmentalist. And when they were putting the site out there on the highway, the dump site, her and Mrs. Whitlow marched against that. And then they also picketed the cleaners that was on two streets over from Grace. I can't think of the name of it. They had the chemicals that were down in the ground. And also in Canada, when the blue chick was buying up property and stuff, there was a big issue there, too. And so she had a thing that she was going, like, she was doing lead abatement. And that was what caused her death. She agreed that she was, it gave her brain problems. Yeah, and so she was an environmentalist. She was on it. I mean, she didn't take no for an answer. And they put some of them in jail. So I mean, they were fighting to keep that dump site open.
Yeah.
So she was a very, very, very powerful person.
So I will maybe create a, maybe there's like a Google form that we can do that will list names. And then you can add names in. Does that seem like a good way to keep the conversation going?
I think this is, it really encourages us to get a lot of people to come to the meeting because we need lots of tables.
Exactly, we do, because we have too many names. Need more tables.
I think you can show them on a, he has, out at the ORAC, if we go there, he has this thing where you can use your PowerPoint presentation and show pictures and names and stuff. We always did, like honoring those women that passed with breast cancer.
Well, one's idea was, I remember that Dahlia made a video and I thought it was for Women's Equality Day, but it was for International Women's Day. So I still want to look at it because I can't quite remember if that might be something we would want to show. But we could definitely have.
Get some information from that.
It would certainly fit in with women's acknowledging, too.
Exactly. So hopefully, Dahlia, she's, I'll ask her to find the video. So let's, we'll go ahead and, in that conversation, because we have the subcommittee, and if you want to join that subcommittee, please do. Because there's still lots to plan and will be lots to do. But again, May is where we want to confirm our space. So next month, we'll be voting on that, confirming all of the space, the guest speakers and all that. And hopefully a budget, we have a budget by then. I'm still looking for past commissioners. As of right now, I only have like a list of three that weren't, that aren't current commissioners or that were presidents. So that is Pat Boy, Jaclyn Dyer, and Cassandra Cahill.
Sharon Kearns reminded me that all of the minutes are online on the Michigan City website since the day, since the first day. I'll take a look at that.
All right, that'd be awesome.
I'll take a look at that and make a list.
Okay, great. So I think good things are happening there. Moving on is to our, we had our first Women's Health Subcommittee meeting. And what we realized is there's a lot. You know, it's a lot. It's a big overwhelming kind of field to look at. And what we realized is that we got to look at from micro to macro to micro to really create something that would be useful. Yeah, and then what we realized is maybe there needs to be a survey to find out what our community needs are. And within that, so, okay, so I guess I'll just go down through this thing. So Veronica, do you want to say anything about any conversation that we had with mental health or just that we realized even within that field, there's subcategories?
Okay, so as you know, mental health has, the need for it is even larger than what it was pre-pandemic. So, and it's a bigger need. And the need affects, you know, the increase of substance abuse, domestic violence. You have the children, you know, in schools that are being affected. And so it's much larger, much larger than I've ever remembered it to be. And maybe that's because people are becoming more aware that they need help and what it is to look for. I guess what it is to look for, you know, when situations at home, school, family, community are being affected, then they're seeing that they do need someone, someone to help. And where they should go is things that they need to know, where they should go for help in situations like that. So narrowing it down to what we want to target is the trick.
Yeah, because even if we look at just, even just what you said, mental health, you have children, teens, adults, you know, men and women are different, people of color are different, families, substance abuse, anxiety, depression, suicide, all of these categories are under there. And then also just breaking the stigma of mental health and the ability to reach out. And then we know there's all sorts of resources there. And if we look at breakdown women's maternal health, since we've been kind of dealing with that in the last few years here, is the prenatal care, postnatal care, reproductive rights and needs, breastfeeding support, childcare support, and all the resources for that.
And just women's health in general.
Yeah. So it's, you know, everything that we're looking at is quite big. And then cancer, disease, illnesses, you know, screening, support care, and again, resources. We know we have a number of amazing groups in town doing really positive work. But again, are they communicating together? Is there any opportunity to create listening sessions, you know, where we can bring them together to see if there's cross ideas for collaboration?
I think Dune Brook can help families, too. Dune Brook works with the Dues, like we work with the Dues. They have home care, they have after-school care and stuff. And so we change ideas and I think it'll be more prominent now since Tammy is there than it was before. Sometimes people get territorial, so you have to be careful how you approach. But we've worked with, gosh, everybody in town, really. You know, you just, I think there's a lack, a need for Hispanic population because we always go to the table and tell them what they need and want, but we don't ask them. And that's a big issue. We need to ask because there is a cultural barrier there, too. And sometimes they don't want to come forward and express themselves because of the fear and they're not, they don't speak out for themselves and that's an issue, too. So we have, if you're going to have something that's going to include the Hispanic females, then you might want to have somebody there that's Hispanic that knows when they're not looking, it's okay, because they're taught not to look you in the eye or whatever. So that's what we have to do when we start getting speakers or people to lead something. We need to make sure that they're talking about the needs of that population. So we need to do a survey for the Hispanic moms.
Yes.
To make sure that we're doing what their need is and not what you think it is.
Isn't there a young lady that works for Health, is it Healthlink? Her name is Liz, P-I-N-A. Who? I think it's Healthlink, L-I-Z-P-I-N-A. I think she.
Maya?
Yeah, Liz. She works at Healthlink.
Okay.
Every time, every time something's coming up in Healthlink.
I can't, I got her name in my. She helped me with COVID testing at the senior house development on the boulevard. And she was very good. And I mean, you know, we did have a few Hispanic people that came through there and she just put them right through, you know.
Yes, she does, it is Healthlink. She's the outreach, she works in the outreach and enrollment at Healthlink. And her last, her name is L-I-Z-P-I-N-A. She may be, she may be a good story.
I'm trying to get, oh, when they knew.
I'm sorry, L-I-Z, Liz. Lisa, Lisa, Lisa Pina, something like that, yeah. P-I-N-A.
Okay. L-I-Z.
Yes.
Okay.
And another lady is Susan Anna Murato. Gotta get her out.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. She does a lot with the Hispanic families and she worked the battlegrounds to help get the Hispanic families through their COVID testing and stuff, so.
Doesn't she work with Dua, too?
She works out of our office, but she works, her office is in our office. She's a Dua. She goes through the pre-post and all of that stuff with the parents.
Well, this is, this is great. I mean, this is the thing, like, are we, so then I started, we came up with like surveys. But are we looking to create support for healthcare providers? And then there's also the needs of the community. You know, like, so there's two different groups within the subgroups of all of that.
Lots of subgroups.
So if we make the survey for the people within the community and match them with the, with the, with the providers.
Well, that's kind of what I was thinking, too. The first thing is the surveys. And the surveys, some would be written, but some would be direct. I think a mixture of things. And then when we come together in a gigantic group and break off, then we begin to see where things fit and what the needs are. The needs will be, this is going to go on for several years, you know that. This is not going to be done this year.
No, exactly. I think we're just.
This is our starting point.
This is a starting point.
And that's the exciting part about it. But because there's so much to do, we want to do it correctly and thoroughly.
Yes.
And it's not going to be perfect at all. It's not going to fit in neatly. So we have to be patient.
Yeah. Well, it's also, like, even just, I've done a little bit of research now on questionnaires and surveys and the difference of the two and making sure you get the right questions in.
Use the right language.
Right, language. And so, you know, that in and of itself was going to take us time to.
So, you know, why don't we ask those two people to do a survey for us?
Well, they might be doing it very beautifully in their everyday working conditions. And it may be all verbal, and that's fine. That's absolutely fine, as long as they can record. That's why I said, some of the, some surveys can be handed out to people or something. But I.
Well, I think if they did the survey, they would have one-on-one contact with the people and then they'd get the questions from that. Can we do two different types of surveys? Some, that's one-on-one for those who don't fully do social media. But in this day and age, a lot of people are on social media. And Facebook, for example, organizations can form a questionnaire and they, you know, and take a poll. And you can, like, promote that poll, whereas it will go out in a certain area. So it will cover so many miles and it will go through people's Facebook. The algorithms on Facebook, for example.
Okay, but we're speaking right now about the Hispanic population and I don't.
They're on social media, too.
They are, but are they going to respond? See, that's another issue, too.
That's why I said maybe, maybe through Facebook, maybe so, if they feel safe. That's why it's two different ways. One for those who will on social media and one those who will do it face-to-face. That way you're getting, you're getting two different ways. You see what I'm saying? Because some people won't respond on social media.
I wouldn't do it.
And I wouldn't do it. So you wouldn't do it face-to-face.
I would prefer.
You would prefer social media. You see, so, and that also goes with, you know, the generations, you know.
Well, I just don't know who's responding on social media. That's why I don't trust it.
So that's a thought. I have a chair.
No, and I, yes, so, yeah, developing these surveys and how we get it out and who we get it out to is going to be definitely something that's going to take us some time. I mean, you know, if we think about just the healthcare providers, it'd be like these kind of listening groups, support groups, creating connections. When you think about the larger community, larger project could be a health fair, right? But I think, again, we are just in the beginning of this. And when I went to the, again, the Indiana Commission of Women's State site, they did do this great program called Hoosier Women Speak. And they had a series of seventeen listening sessions, which is why maybe these listening sessions are also kind of key to finding out really what the community is thinking. They were smaller sessions. But what they found, this is back in 2012, though, that their top five priorities at that time were health-related issues, work-based issues, caregiving, violence against women, and leadership. Right, so whatever their questionnaire might be, something that we can get, but it's not online, none of this stuff is available right now. I have a call-in to see if we can even find out what they were, how they approached the questions. They also say that they would leave listening sessions. And I don't know if that's what we need, it's just as an idea of how to get that ball rolling. Because I think you're right, if we do listening sessions for different, smaller, smaller groups of people, we would want the key leaders that people will relate with, that, you know, you're going to give them more feedback.
Right, because through the listening sessions, that's how we developed this commission. Pat Boy, myself, Angie, Jerry Jones, several of us was attending those listening sessions.
Oh, yeah, okay.
That's how the commission came about. Because we were going to those listening sessions in 2011 and 2012.
Yes. Okay.
And that's why.
And that's why Deb was really charged on the women running for office because that was a program they started in 2015. Okay. Okay. So I do think that's good for me, but us, to look at is that there have been resources for women's commissions and how we are determining or how we're building programs, so that's really interesting. And that maybe there is some connection or partnership with them. Because it's been a long time since they've done a survey in all of Indiana, even. So, you know. We kind of spearhead it here on a smaller, this smaller scale, which I think is fantastic. And then we can, you know, expand from that. It would be very exciting.
Especially since now we've been through an entire pandemic. And so, you know, the needs then versus the needs now.
Yeah, and just the burnout of our healthcare community and systems right now, too, to need some addressing. So this is a bigger topic.
This will be all year.
Definitely all year. But I did, you know, we did a little bit of the research on just the, when we, I did that Department of Labor workshop on implicit bias in women's healthcare. What I realized is we can utilize our Michigan City site for the Women's Commission and put up these links. Like, as I kept going, how am I going to get these links out? How am I going to share that this is a possibility? Are people that want to know, you know, about bias reduction and internal medicine? I mean, like, so we actually can utilize the site to have links. So I do want to propose that, that we create like subcategories of what we care about with specific links for that. Like, so for mental health, we would list the Swansea Center, whatever those categories would be. For, you know, interesting, though, I did go to this Health in Her Hugh, which is a digital platform connecting Black women and women of color to culturally competent healthcare providers, health content, and community. There's no one listed in Michigan City. There's only.
Very few.
Yeah.
There's very few, and you're right, but.
But even like, your name's not on there, like, no one's name is on there, right? So even just on this national site that is offering resources and information to people, the only physician that comes up is Munster, Indiana, or Chicago, Illinois. So I know it can't be true that we don't have.
I wonder what their requirements are to get on those sites. Because that is another thing, is the requirements, is there a cost, is there fees? You know, when you get, when you get on those, on those, on those sites as a clinician, sometimes there's a lot to go with that. So I want, so that's why I say I wonder what it is. But regardless, there is a limited amount of clinicians of color, for example.
Yes.
It's very hard, extremely hard to find.
Yes.
They're, they're hard to find, just even within the entire state.
Yeah.
They're, it's very, very hard.
So that's something that I think we should try to figure out. Honestly, I don't know. I mean, how can we help get that information out and share it?
We do need to find, we do need to find a way to, to share other, other platforms. There are other platforms that clinicians of color, for example.
Okay.
Are on that people can go to if they want some, you know, someone specifically. There are other, other places that they can look, but if they're looking for somebody in Michigan City, it's very few. If they're looking for, you know, so they just got to, got to see.
Yeah.
Okay, what was that title again?
And I can send all this to you guys too. This one is called Health in Her Hue. And these were all recommended by the Department of Labor, um, or some of the speakers at that, uh, webinar. Um, yes.
And see, I had not, I've heard a lot of them. I haven't heard this particular site.
The other one that I, I think is pretty interesting is this Community Conversation Sister to Sister, a women's health initiative.
Assistance.
It is, a women's health initiative aims to address barriers to improved health outcomes in the Black community and to empower community members as they navigate the medical system in search of the highest quality care for themselves and their families.
What is that called?
Sister to Sister.
Sister to Sister.
And that is here?
Community Conversations. It's not, it is a national, but I did go to the site to see it too. They have a lot of, um, online seminars and just connections. Um, they list a lot of different, um, uh, programs, dealing with different issues.
And we did, um, training here for Sister to Sister. And that Sisters Informing Sisters on Topics of AIDS. And that was, I've been here twenty-two years, twenty, twenty years with minority health, something like that. And so that was maybe two thousand and five, two thousand and six. There was the program that came out and it was Sister to Sister. And it's, uh, the, the word sister is Sisters Informing Sisters on Topics of AIDS. And you had to be trained in order to give that workshop. And it, and it's really in-depth. And I did part of it one time for, um, the Women's Shelter, when we were talking about, um, using, um, protection before you have sex or whatever. And so it's, it's really a deep conversation. You know, it's really deep. Uh, I still have the Quran. So that's, that's not, really they've taken a name and changed it.
The other sites that I've discovered through this, um, those workshops was, there's a Bias Reduction in Internal Medicine. Again, if we want to look at what St. Francis is doing, you know, and how they're initiating programs and changes, there's, they're definitely local. This is from, um, Wisconsin Madison. There's also the Associate of Black Women Physicians. So, you know, there's resources that we could send to larger places too, depending on what we decide we're interested in.
Michigan City doesn't have a lot of African-Americans doing anything that's professional. Basically because there's nothing here to keep them here. They go to bigger cities. I hear you. They go to bigger cities. Yes. Uh, we're very fortunate to have the ones that we do have, um, and then some of them don't come because of the school system. Our school system is rated very high. And then there's no social life.
Yeah.
There's no social life. And if you talk about the Michigan City area schools, they say they want African-American males, but that's not necessarily so. They last a year and then they're gone. It's, it's just, Michigan City is just not like South Bend.
Yeah.
I'll put it that way.
Yeah. So like, but I guess those are questions that we, how can we change, how can we offer? How do we offer more? How can, you know, what can Michigan City do? I, I mean, it is.
We're going to have to start at the top.
Yeah.
And work our way down.
Yeah.
Honey, do you know, do you know what the, uh, when I moved to Michigan City, I swear the population was twenty percent African-American. Is it still that high?
No.
I didn't think so. So people are moving out.
You know, like, uh, say for instance, my kids, I don't encourage them to come back here. Uh, one son did, and he found it was a mistake. So I, I don't encourage that because there's nothing here for them. And then the doors are not open like they are in the larger cities.
Yeah.
The doors are not, they're just not open.
Yeah.
So why spend all that money to go to school? And you come home and you can't get a job. They, you have a administrator's license, but they put you in a classroom.
Or, or if they do, you do get a job, you don't, you're not paid what you're worth. So, you know, you can go to another city or another state.
And, and.
Just talking about that. You get paid way more.
This is so upsetting to me.
My coworker made six dollars more an hour than I did, and I had more education.
You know, I think of, I think of the kids that I taught, the kids that I worked with, and I just longed for them to be professionals here.
Nope.
In Michigan City.
I wouldn't advise my child to come back here.
Well, this is a real shame. And I, we were, she was just saying that, that she wanted to teach here in the schools, but she makes more in Gary than she makes here. So then that doesn't seem, so it can't seem something like.
I mean, even, even like when my daughter wrestled, you know, she had a really good, uh, wrestling coach. And, and he, he wasn't African-American, but he ended up leaving. He, 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 he taught her that, that one, that one year. It was great. She responded to him and she came second in state that year and.
Which, which daughter wrestled?
That was Yael. Yeah, she was the only, she was the only, she was the only female wrestler.
Yeah.
Um, in City. And, and he, he ends up going to another school, because, you know, the pay is better. He has to take, he has to take care of his school.
Didn't we support you in that?
Yes, we did. You guessed, the Women's Commission did.
We did.
I, I know, I have to bring pictures. I have to go and dig deep and bring pictures, because she did come second in state.
Yeah.
And the Women's Commission, um, helped get her uniform and everything that she needed, and I remember that. Oh, my God. I mean, if we had time, I still got the videos and just.
Where is she now?
She's at, um, IU in, in Bloomington. In Bloomington. So, um, and then, you know, my other son, he's in Illinois, at IU in Illinois, so. But, you know, and he's going to school to teach, but he doesn't desire to teach here. He wants to, you know, they, like you said, um, Ms. Albertine, is that, you know, the, our kids, they, they go to school here, but there's nothing here to keep them. There's nothing here to.
Bring them back.
To bring them back.
And they don't get the same treatment in the jobs that you get here. Uh, we had a hard time getting my youngest son on the fire department. He was a fireman for the service, but Michigan City didn't want to hire him. So, you know, it's like, those kind of things still exist here. And it's hard to talk your child into coming back to that after you sent them off to school. They've worked, they've served in the Army or National Guard or whatever. Who wants to come here and listen to that crap? They don't want to come back, and you can't blame them. And it's disheartening too.
I think that's one of the complexities of this area. You know, I mean, even just the fact that it's more, it's like, we've got the summer community, you know, all the, all these issues bring up, it seems to, they kind of wrap around, why would you stay here if there's nothing off-season or that way? So these are very interesting. I'm learning a lot, I'm learning a lot, and we're watching conversations, so.
And with the, like, the larger cities, Chicago and South Bend, like, my daughter's going to come back here so she can pay off her college loans, but she will not be able to find a job here in her area of degree. She will have to travel to a larger, you know, city, because there isn't anything here. So even if you come back to live here, you're still outsourcing that. Education to those larger cities.
Yeah.
My, yeah, none of my three kids are there.
But then there are some people that do come back here for, you know, for, to hear reasons. So I mean, there's, on the other end of the spectrum, like, I specifically sought to move back here because I liked certain things that I wasn't finding, like, culture and diversity in the area that I was in. So, I mean, there is some other aspects where some people do choose to move back here intentionally. Some positivity there to throw out.
Good, we need the positivity, the hope, the hope alive.
I did seek back out. And I have, and I have heard of people that have, I, I don't know them personally, but I have heard of people going out, going away, and after they lived a little bit out, then they do come back to try to, to try to put back into the city.
But you think the grass is greener on the other side, but it really wasn't, so you don't know. I look at Michigan, I always think that there's so many possibilities in Michigan City. That's, I really do. I just haven't really been able to find them, to follow through on them. But like, you know what I mean? And that's why I moved here, you know, I moved here because I was like, well, there's a lot of possibilities.
Yeah, for you, maybe, yes.
Right.
And, and I felt just the opposite of being here. I did not. This was the only place I gave my husband a bad time about over in town. Of all the, all the fifteen or so moves we had in our marriage, this was the one I, I really felt concerned about. And yet, people really were good to me. And it was mainly.
That was a big.
Mainly the African-American community, mainly.
That was exactly why, when we moved back here, that was one of the biggest differences, is the, um, inclusion from people, just people in general. My kids felt, you know, more included in school with all their kids. As a parent, I was included more with the other parents, whereas where I was at, I was kind of ignored because I was the new person or, and, and I felt more included here, and that's what it was. It was the people that made me feel better. Also, to add to Susan's positivity, there are, there are up-and-coming small African-American businesses that are out there. And there are some young people out there really trying to.
Really hard.
Really trying to do, um, just some. Yes, um, one person, I never met her personally, but I was so impressed, I believe it was for the NAACP, luncheon, and her name, she has a spa, young lady has a spa, and she, she got an award because she went away, she got educated, and she came back and, and put that education right back into Michigan City. Her, her spa is in the Lighthouse Mall, Harmon, Harmonis, Harmonas.
Oh, nice.
Yes.
There's a woman in, in Jackson Street that has a, she's doing some spa stuff too, African-American woman.
Oh, this young one, yeah, and this young lady, she, yeah, and I thought it was so cool, because she, she got an award because she came back.
Yeah.
Yeah, she came, she came back, and I thought that was really cool, but there are other young people that came with my kids that are opening up their small businesses and doing things like that. So if we could somehow, you know, keep them and build on that.
Yeah.
So since you mentioned, uh, uh, NAACP. And it's. Our, our trailblazing, our trailblazing award ceremony is the first, um, Saturday in May, May seventh, at the Blue Chip. And, uh, we are honoring Coleman Hicks Funeral Home. And, uh, Ron, Ron Gaston's Temple Fitness, Total Temple Fitness. Okay. Total Temple Fitness and some others. I forget the others' names. But our speaker is Dr. George Fraser, who's speaking on economics.
Oh, that's great.
Speaking on economics and, um, building economics, so, um, you are invited. I forgot, I'm a flyer.
Trying to send that out to people. We are, we are at our turn, but I want to also mention, um, and I, again, we've kind of veered off our agenda a little bit. I apologize for that, but I think the conversation was very helpful in how we can proceed forward on some of these ideas. That, I just want to update us on Kathy Dennis, who came in to talk about the Native American sculpture. That that event is on Friday, May sixth, at the library from five to seven. What they'll be doing, they'll have, I don't know, storyteller, um, some dance, some music, and the.
What day is Friday?
That is the first Friday.
That's Friday, May sixth. I just said four thirty?
Was it four thirty? I didn't have that. I thought it was five to seven, but it could be four thirty.
So much coming up all of a sudden, you know?
Yeah, we had five to seven, but I had it in the papers today, I think it was. I thought it said four thirty.
Okay. Um, and then we have one other, uh, thanks for this fantastic opportunity. I, however, am not available to be there, so if anyone is, let me just share it. This is, uh, the Leadership, LaPorte County is holding a Volunteer Connection Expo on April twenty-eighth at the LaPorte County Fairgrounds. Um, it is a space that's open to any nonprofit organization for thirty, fee of thirty dollars, but you can, um.
Have a table.
Have a table, you know, and share, you know, who we are, what we're doing. But, because I do think that maybe we do, we, maybe we should grow. Get more people involved. It might help us.
Sure, nice.
Do more. Anyway, just throwing that out there. But I cannot attend, I cannot be there for that day, but if anyone would like to.
What, what do we?
It is, um.
It's Thursday, right?
Thursday, yeah. April twenty-eighth.
What time?
Uh, let's see if I can find that. Put my glasses on. Four to seven. From four to seven. But although you, uh, and are, I should say, maybe you are interested, because there's going to be other organizations there that might need volunteers too, so it could be interesting to have.
I do want me to give, April thirtieth, we're having our Black Barber Shop Initiative, uh, Marvelous Cuts. Whatever, platinum, platinum and, um.
So many images, shop.
Shaffer images. We're doing, uh, blood pressure and BMI. We're doing the glucose testing for all those African-American men and whoever else comes in there, uh, to get their hair cut. And so we'll be doing that from, I think it's nine until two.
Nice. Fantastic. Any other good news going on?
Well, we certainly need to mention Tuesday.
Yeah, the League of Women Voters is sponsoring, along with Purdue Northwest, a presentation, um, about, well, it's a professor of political science and the dean of the Honors College, Jonathan Schwartz, is going to talk about the differences between democracy and autocracy. And especially how that applies now to what's happening in Ukraine. And, um, but it's at five o'clock at Dorkin Center in, at Purdue Northwest, yeah. On Tuesday, the twenty-sixth. It's free and there are refreshments.
And it's just an hour too. It's not going to be really one hour or anything.
I hope there'll be some questions at the. Five o'clock. Doors open at four thirty.
Okay, our next meeting is, um, May twenty-sixth?
Is that Thursday? On a Thursday?
Yeah, it's Thursday.
You said May, no, it was May nineteen.
May nineteen?
Oh, May nineteen. It's the third. Oh, yeah, that would be the last one.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, so then I am not going to be here at that meeting. Maybe that's why I put the twenty-sixth down, because I was wanting it to be that date. But it's why, it's our tenth year anniversary, so we're going to go.
Oh, come next week.
So it's May nineteen.
May nineteen. So Albertine, you'll be running that meeting.
Your husband is welcome to join us. Oh, but she's not here.
I will be at that one. Okay, so then she'll be at that one.
Will you give me an agenda that you want?
I will, yeah. Um, and, but basically, you're going to be really determining the may, be voting on the event.
Do you know where?
Yeah.
Where we're going to hold it. We have to get prices.
Yeah. Anyway, yes.
Do you have the meetings, the dates for the other meetings?
No, we do not have those yet. So we do need to still determine when the, um, um, subcommittee for the, the event occurs, and then also the subcommittee for, which we will do, yes, we will meet at a library, which would be easier to communicate with you.
Yes.
Didn't you say there was a luncheon next term? A meeting for lunch?
Well, she's free at lunchtime.
Okay, but, but I swear I got something from you that said, uh, meeting for lunch, yeah.
No, it's lunchtime.
Oh, I thought, I thought it said lunch, but did you, did you schedule?
I have not scheduled anything. Should we do that, can we do that now while we're all here, presentant?
I think it, I, I love it down in my calendar.
Me too.
As soon as possible.
Yeah. Love it. Let's do this. So Monday, so for the Health Committee. So Monday, so for the Health Committee, we're thinking of Monday time. So maybe, let's see, what's the, May 2nd, will that be a good time? This is for the Health Committee Subcommittee, Monday.
Oh, that's your Health Subcommittee?
Yeah. Did that 11 o'clock time mark for you?
They don't have my calendar here.
Oh, okay.
I really want to say yes.
Should we just put it in and then?
Let's put it in, and if, and if I find that, when I go back to the car and I see that something is at that time, then I'll send you a message, or you can.
So this will be the Women's Health Subcommittee, can we do, meet at the library? But we'll zoom in to Veronica.
Library, so which library, between the library that's.
Yes.
That's down, that's right down the street.
Oh, okay.
I could, I could actually, like, go there, because it won't take but a couple minutes to just get there.
You're saying down the street from Swansea Center?
Yeah.
So we're not talking about Michigan City.
Well, you're talking about Cool Springs.
Cool Springs.
And they, yeah, they do not have separate rooms, so I'm not sure.
Which one?
Cool Springs.
Cool Springs do, they have a meeting room. They have a meeting room, and they have a bigger one.
Okay, I've already been in the bigger one, I guess.
Yes, I've, I've spoken to them before, because I do stuff over there, and you can meet, they do have a bigger room, and where we all, you know, where we can go, and it's private, so.
Okay.
Do you have to make reservations?
I just have to, I could just call up there and they can block it out for us.
Okay, so Albertine's good, Joanne's good.
And give us the date again, please, I've been.
Monday, May 2nd, at 11.
And I'm sorry, you guys, I mean, unless you just want, you know, and I could zoom in too and just close my door.
No, 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 we'll get a lock down.
Okay, and then for the 20th, 10th anniversary party, when do we want to, when can you guys meet? Tuesday, the 3rd?
I would love to help out, but I work all day long, so if you guys just throw me stuff you want me to do, I'd be more than happy to help, just, say here, Sarah, do this.
I was just talking about how I wish I missed you, and I'm serious. I'm serious about that, because I know how you work.
Just give me something to do, and I'll do it. In my boredom time.
Yeah, great, so you got Tuesday being 3rd, let's see what time do we want? This is Bonnie, who else is with us?
Fay. Has to be after.
What day do you guys like?
And me.
And you. What day is better for all of you?
Well, I thought we decided.
I thought you said Tuesday.
Okay, great, Tuesday.
In the afternoon, is that what you want?
What time afternoon?
You want 2:00 o'clock? It's 2:00.
2:00 is good?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
At Michigan City Library.
Well, there, we can meet, we're, yeah, we can do that. Yeah, let's do the number. Okay, so 2:00, and that is for the party.
What's the other library called, if it's not the Michigan City Library, what is it?
LaPorte County Library.
Cool Springs Branch?
Yeah, Cool Springs Branch.
Fantastic. And then we'll have an agenda and everything writing for you, Albertine.
Okay, there, so, I'm like right on the road from there, but I stopped that, so which one are you talking about?
Any final thoughts?
We're meeting at 12:00 at the library, in LaPorte. 12:00.
11:00.
11:00, okay.
11:00, and then on Tuesday, we're at 2:00.
Okay, yeah, 2:00 I got. I just kept thinking lunch, and so it was a bit late.
Okay, well, thank you guys so much for your time and energy, thoughts, and we'll keep moving.
Thank you.